Yep. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the March 6, 2023 joint meeting of the Long Meadow Select Board and the Finance Committee. I will start with my script. This is Select Board Chair, Josh Levine. I will be confirming that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Mark Gold.
Here.
Dan Zwerko.
Here.
Tom McQusset.
Here.
Staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Lynn Simmons.
Here.
Mike Barbieri.
Here.
This open meeting of Long Meadow Select Board is being conducted in person with a remote option available to the public consistent with Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021. This meeting is convened in person via Zoom webinar as posted on the agenda on the town's website identifying how the public may join. There is no chat or Q and A function. All of the materials for this meeting are available on the agenda posted on longmeadow.org, sorry, longmeadowma.gov. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda unless I note otherwise. Each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by roll call vote. This meeting will feature resident comment. For residents attending the meeting in person, please fill out the public comment form given upon arrival to the meeting. I will call on residents in the order in which the forms are received. For residents participating in the meeting via Zoom webinar format, members of the public are attendees. If a member of the public would like to speak during resident comment, please use the raise hand icon at the bottom of the screen. The meeting moderator will promote you to panelists, unmute you, and give you permission to speak. To join the webinar by phone, dial star nine to raise your hand and star six to mute/unmute. Residents who wish to speak will identify their names and addresses only. Each individual is afforded three minutes for comments. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and that some attendees are participating by video conference. Please remember to mute your phone or computer when you are not speaking. Okay. Are you opening your meeting now?
Yes.
Okay.
Nora McKay, Chair of the Finance Committee, opening the Finance Committee meeting. I believe we only have three members present tonight, but I'll call a roll just in case there's somebody online. Erica Weida.
Here.
Andrew Lamb. John Deneen.
Here.
Bill Welch. Maury Garrett. All right. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for joining us tonight. We appreciate it. We'll move on to the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. For announcements, special town election. The special town election will be held on Tuesday, March 7, 2023. That's tomorrow, at the Long Meadow Community House. Polls open at 7:00 a.m. and close at 8:00 p.m. For more information on the special election, please visit www-longmeadowma.gov/elections. Cooley Brook. The town is hiring the Conway School of Landscape Design to develop conceptual designs for the ecological enhancement of Cooley Brook and Bliss and Laurel Parks. The Select Board is accepting applications for a resident advisor to serve on the core team that will advise the student group. You are interested in providing your perspective on the restoring Cooley Brook, please submit your application online via the form linked on the Plating Department's webpage. No technical expertise is required. Applications are due March 10. Candidates should be, should expect to be interviewed at the March 20 Select Board meeting. To apply, visit longmeadowma.gov/CooleyBrook. Okay, so we can go right into the school department budget presentation. Not much letting Marty in. Dr. O'Shea.
All right.
There we go. We see you and hear you.
All right. Good evening, everyone. I'm not sure if the school committee chair Nicole Schwanere is on the call, if she wants to give us a moment of comments. Otherwise, I can get right into it.
I'm here. You can go forward.
Nicole's in the back. She said, go ahead.
All right. Thanks so much. I generally like to be in person for meetings, but was unable to be with you tonight. So I appreciate the chance to zoom in and represent the budget that was voted and approved by the Long Meadow School Committee. Start by thanking Tom Mazza for his dedicated work on this and for assistance that we received from Paul Servet and town manager Lynn Simmons. So like, I think you have the slide deck, if you're able to pull that up. Um, there we go.
Can you see that okay?
Yeah, that's great. Thank you. So thanks so much. Appreciate the chance to share this budget with the Select Board. Thank you for visiting tonight. And so I'll try to hit the items from the school committee approved budget that are sort of most salient to you as a Select Board. So I'll start with Slide 2 as sort of a high level summary of the FY-24 budget. Although the heading says recommended summary, this is in fact the voting budget part of the school committee. You'll see that it requests an increase from the general fund contribution of just over $1.5 million. We are anticipating an increase in special revenue of around $252,000 for a total budget increase of $1.75 million over FY-23. And so we can, we'll get into some of the specifics of it and starting just very broadly. Slide 3, Mike. I think the Select Board is well aware of some of the external influences on the operating budgets and in particular, the cost of living increases. We've talked with the Select Board and with community about the anticipated increase in the tuition that we are required to pay private schools for replacement of Long Meadow Public Schools students out of district, pressured certainly on other aspects of the operating budget, including utilities. I think for tonight, one of the things that is notable and ought to be sort of understood as we plan for the FY-24 budget, but also plan for future budgets, is the revisions to the Chapter 70 funding formula. And so we'll talk about that shortly, but I really think that's something that, since it is a significant source of revenue to the town, that it means something that, that we all understand with the, understand with the, with the pattern and what we can anticipate in future years. And certainly, the school committee wants to be cognizant of the fiscal position of the town. And so we've had opportunities to learn from Lynn and Paul about some of the challenges and opportunities on the town side. And we hope that this budget is reflective of that. And we hope that this budget is one that is manageable to the town. So the next slide, Mike. So this is an important slide for us to take a look at. Chapter 78 is the main revenue source that the state of Massachusetts uses to fund public education in the state. And you'll see that Chapter 78 has increased to the town of Long Meadow in recent years, just as it has increased to communities across the state. In fact, the, the increase in Chapter 78 to districts is the largest single year-over-year increase, I believe, in the history of the Chapter 70 funding approach. So it's significant that the town can anticipate, at least based on the governor's budget, an increase of over $600,000 in Chapter 78. And this comes on the heels of an increase from FY-22 to FY-23 of about a quarter million dollars. So in, in the course of a couple of fiscal years, we've seen Chapter 78 grow from $5.7 million in FY-22, and we're anticipating over $7 million in FY-24. Again, this is based on the governor's recently released budget. This is notable because this represents the third year of the phase-in of the revisions to the Chapter 70 funding formula. This is by the provisions of the Student Opportunity Act. This is meant to be a six-year phase-in. So the Student Opportunity Act revised the Chapter 70 funding formula to reflect the, really the true costs of educating children. And I know that the Select Board is aware that the Chapter 70 funding formula was developed back in the 90s, and it was long overdue for revision. And I'm really pleased that the state has held truths to its word and that it is fully implementing this, the Student Opportunity Act funding revisions in this the third year. So we can anticipate three more years of phase-in of the revisions to the Chapter 70 funding formula. And, and what the funding formula does is essentially recognize the true costs of educating kids as it relates to special education, as it relates to educating high need students, even as it relates to employee benefits. So this is, this is good news for municipalities and districts across the state. And it's a welcome, it's a welcome injection potentially of Chapter 78 to the town. And, and again, I think reflective of the statewide consensus that the true costs of educating children in the state of Massachusetts have grown since the funding formula was developed. So appreciate the chance to talk to you a little bit about the, the Chapter 70 funding formula revisions. And we can anticipate a few more years of the revisions. The exact amounts, it's always tough to say because it's based on enrollment, it's based on inflation factors, it's based on the percentage of students that, that the state identifies as being in the high needs category. So it's, it's tough to, it's a bit of a black box to really understand what future Chapter 70 funding levels will look like. But we can anticipate that it will be reflective of, of the Student Opportunity Act. Mike, you can go to the next slide. And one of the things that we've been talking about at the school committee is the, the shifting educational landscape, the fact that, you know, we're, children need us more than ever. I think the pandemic demonstrated the importance of public schooling to families and to students. And, you know, even prior to the pandemic, we recognized that we were needing to make extra efforts to meet the social, emotional, and behavioral needs of students. And additionally, it's worth noting that even here in Long Meadow, that the Department of Education is recognizing an increasing number of students as, as high needs in Long Meadow. And so some of the Chapter 70 increases that you've seen are reflective of the increase in the number of students that are identified as high needs. Students in that high needs category are students who are English language learners, students who are low income, and students who have a learning disability. So we've seen an increase in that category. And obviously, that means that we've got to make additional and better efforts to support those students. And we also have been talking a lot about staff well-being. You know, in, in the shortest way I can explain it is the, is the quote principal Tom Landers, who said that the world is expecting more of educators now than, than ever before. And I think he's right about that. I think we, we expect a lot out of educators. And I think it's important that we support them as best we can with, with the budget that we have brought to you tonight. Next slide, Mike. I won't linger on this too long, but this is some data from our Eutheros Behavior Survey. And you'll see that even prior to the pandemic, going back to the 2017, 2018 school year, we saw a live increase in rates of students who were reporting depression, anxiety, suicidal ideation, eating disorders, and self-harm. So these are things that are real. And though this is an LHS climate survey, I can tell you that our elementary and middle principals would report concerns in these areas as well. And so though some might attribute some of this to the pandemic, I would say that we were seeing signs of this long before the pandemic. And again, I, I hope we can continue to support the, the social, emotional needs of kids and behavioral needs of kids. Mike, thanks. And, and these slides speak for themselves. And I'm sure you had an opportunity to review it. But essentially, what these slides try to say is that we have been trying to expand our capacity to support student well-being across the district. And we've made some critical investments to health services, to counseling, and to social, emotional learning supports. Thanks, Mike. And this continues that capacity building effort that we've been involved with. You'll see that we were able to add registered behavioral technicians, RBTs. They've been a great shot they are to the district to support students and to support staff who are dealing with students with behavioral challenges. And we have some additional work to do in this area. And, and though some of the capacity building relates to positions, a lot of it relates to professional development, the engagement that we're involved with, with families, and our overall focus on inclusion and equity. Thanks, Mike. And again, this sort of, these bullets sort of speak for themselves. I won't linger on each bullet, but you'll see that we've tried to be strategic with this budget. And we believe that the budget will help us advance the goals of our district improvement plan. We believe that the budget will help us maintain the commitment to manageable class size that, that's long been a commitment of Long Meadow Public Schools. And I'd say that, you know, even after this budget is reviewed by a town meeting, you know, we'll continue to take a look at the needs of students. We'll continue to be responsive to enrollment patterns and make adjustments right up to the beginning of the 24, 23, 24 school year. Thanks, Mike. I know the Select Board is often interested in our enrollment patterns. It's lightly shaded, but the far right is, is future years, FY-24 and beyond. So you'll see that we've experienced a decline at the elementary level. And that decline will sort of start to wash over. It's been washing over to high school for the last couple of years. And we can anticipate that that will sustain itself for a few years. These aren't, these aren't large fluctuations. Other, other communities, you know, are dealing with bigger enrollment fluctuations, either larger increases or larger decreases. But these, these are important patterns that we want to be responsive to. And we want to make sure that we're allocating positions in the budget according to the enrollment patterns that we are seeing. At the high school, we have cohorts of well over 200 students. One of, I think the sophomore class is over 230 students. But right now, at the elementary level, none of the cohorts are above 200 and some are well below that. So that's something that we'll just continue to keep our eyes on. And so to get to some of the nuts and bolts of the, of the budget, the voted budget, the approved budget, to go back to the earlier slide, we'll see that this budget imposes a $41,943,038 budget to support the students of Long Meadow, with $38.8 million of that coming from the general fund. We are very, very fortunate to receive such great support from this community. We are largely dependent on the general fund. We have, you know, Chapter 70 is an important revenue stream, but the town of Long Meadow goes well beyond what is minimally required to support the students and staff of Long Meadow Public Schools. Thanks, Mike. Some historical information for you to review. And you'll see that, you know, candidly, this, this general fund increase that is in this approved budget by the school committee is larger than recent years. You know, we haven't seen this type of increase in the potential increase from the general fund since Holy kindergarten was brought online in Long Meadow. And again, I, I think that the increase is reflective of that shifting educational landscape that we talked about earlier. There have been years, as you can see on the right, where the school committee has been in a position to turn back funds to the town at the close of the fiscal year. Next slide, Mike. And you'll see again that from this slide that we, 92.7% of our funding does come from the general fund. There are some special revenues that we are able to access to support the operations of the district. Circuit breaker is, is a special revenue source from the state that allows us to offset the costs of expensive out-of-district placements. And I'd say that, you know, the dust has not entirely settled on that number. It's possible, given the attention to, on, on out-of-district tuitions, it's possible that, that cover will come in higher. But that's our best projection right now at this moment. And you'll see that we are in a position to apply other grants, Medco grant, school choice, and special education grants that is almost entirely from the federal IDVA grant law. So you'll see, you know, again, our reliance on the general fund, it puts Long Meadow in a winning position. And we're, we're appreciative that the town is able to support us the way they do. Next slide. You'll see, again, I know the Select Board is often attentive to the overall FTE levels of the number of employees in Long Meadow Public Schools. And if Mr. Mazza's available to us, I'd ask him just to walk us through this chart if he could.
You couldn't see the look on his face, Marty.
I'm sure he knew what it was.
I, I gave him a 10-minute warning.
Good evening, everyone. So on the chart, we are showing some historical FTEs for prior fiscal years. The FY-22 budget in number was the FTEs that were included in the budget that was approved by the school committee and ultimately at town meeting last fall, uh, last spring, I'm sorry. And then throughout the course of the year, there are changes that occur, whether it be adding new positions to support situations that are going on in the district at the time. This year, we've had a tremendous challenge of filling all of our teaching positions. So in some instances where we have been unable to find candidates to fill a teaching position, we've had to collapse the number of sections and put more students to increase class size. And so we would try to supplement that with some support services, say a tutor, individuals who, who we can find to fill some of those slots. So those are some of the increases in terms of the revised FY-22, 23 FTEs that you see in terms of the 6.9. Those positions are now going to be taken out of the budget in the proposed FY-24 budget because we plan to go back to hopefully filling those teaching positions in FY-24. They remained in the budget. They weren't filled. So the funding that was budgeted for the teaching position, those were used to pay for the tutoring salary that was added in 23. We kept the position for 24 at the rate, what we believe will be a competitive and hopefully attractive salary to bring on some, some new candidates. But staffing all of our positions this year has been challenging, from teachers to support staff to custodians. We've had a number of positions that have been open the entire year that we have been unsuccessful after repeated postings to try to find candidates. And we continue to still post and are still having trouble. So I can go through more detail if you're interested in the positions. As the superintendent indicated, we, we still have some funds in FY-23 that are paying for support services through COVID-related grants. Those grants will be exhausted in FY-23. So those positions are being removed, not included in FY-24, which contributed to those 11.9 number FTEs you see being reduced overall in the budget. So it's a net decrease from the budget that was approved for FY-23 to the budget that's presented tonight for FY-24.
Thanks, Tom.
Sure.
And so we can advance, Mike, to the next slide.
Marty, there's just, there's a quick question.
I have one question.
Oh, sorry. Yeah, I missed that.
The 6.90 represents six, you know, the six positions, 6.9 positions, and those will be effective, right?
Yeah. Not all of the 6.9 that are in that column in this slide are all getting reduced in the 11.9. I believe there's two of the FTEs that were added in FY-23, the revised budget, that are being carried forward in FY-24. So other positions are being cut to get to the 11.9. Most of the ones added, though, are being reduced.
Okay. Thank you.
Welcome.
On this slide, Tom may provide some additional information if the Select Board is interested in the service levels that we're looking at for FY-24. You'll see that on the right-hand side, when we factor in our contractual obligations alone, that accounts for $1.2 million in increases over FY-23. The other big budget driver is that $682,718 increase in out-of-district tuitions. And so the next slide, Mike, if I could, maybe go to the next slide, and then maybe we'll jump back. You'll see that the out-of-district tuition rate increase is dictated to us by the Operational Services Division. And they have approved a 14% increase in the tuitions that were required to pay private special education programs for essentially for purchase by Long Meadow Public Schools. So that's a significant driver. And then the next slide, Mike. And, and so you'll see that that tuition rate increase alone would, would cause a $364,000, $868 increase over 23. But on top of that, we are anticipating that more students that properly serve them will be, need to be placed out of district next year. So the, the net of the tuition rate increase and the increase in the number of students who will need to be served out of district represents that $600,000 addition to the FY-24 budget. So Mike, can you go back two slides? I think it's Slide 16. And again, I, I won't linger on this too much. We've had some very deep, rich conversations with the school committee about this. But you'll see that the reductions on the left side, these are largely attributable to enrollment-related reductions. So as enrollments shift, or as we see decreases, then we are, we try to be responsive to that. So for example, at the elementary level, we're anticipating needing two fewer sections overall, two fewer classrooms overall in FY-24 as compared to FY-23. Similarly, at the high school, we anticipate that we, we would be in a position to reduce nearly two teachers at Long Meadow High. Some of this is dependent on course signups, which are only now just getting underway at the high school. And so those are some of the, the additions and reductions that we are projecting for FY-24. The attrition number relating to anticipated retirements is a little bit lower than we've seen in recent years. And so that, you know, that's a savings that typically, there's more savings attributed to attrition than we are anticipating in FY-24. Thank you, Mike. You can skip, I think, to almost the end. So as, you know, as we prepare this budget, we So as we prepare this budget, we want to make sure that we're keeping our eyes on a number of variables that are still sort of undetermined. And one of the big unknowns at this point in the year is kindergarten enrollment. We are anticipating a reduction in the number of kindergarten sections next year, but things have a way of changing from March to September, so we'll keep our eyes on that. Class size at the high school and across the district, we have a collective bargaining agreement still to settle. There is a position that is not included in this budget, but one that we are hopeful we will be able to fund, and that is a position called Director of Student and Family Support. This would be a position that would provide help oversee social emotional learning, would help us with our efforts to be inclusive and equitable in our practice and assist with our initiatives relating to DEI. So that position is not currently built into this budget, but will, depending on how other costs settle in, we may be in a position to activate that position. And then special education services and programs, again, we always want to be responsive to the individual needs of students with disabilities. And so those are always, you know, revolving, and we need to be responsive to that going forward. School choice, Medco enrollment, and fee-based services. The school committee has yet to establish fees for FY 24, and those are fees that relate to transportation, preschool, and athletics. I think that takes us to the end. Appreciate everybody's thoughtful attention and happy to answer any questions. And I know also on the call is Chair Nicole Schneer, and Jamie Hanch is the Chair of our Finance Committee. So whether they're on the call or in person, I'm not sure, but I know they'd be happy to answer questions as well.
All right, Marty, this is Josh. I just wanted to say thanks to you and Tom, Paul, and the school committee. I got a tough one this year, but you know, Long Meadow's our school, so I'm glad you all worked so hard on this. My question is about the out-of-district tuition. I don't think it's any, that was a big, that jumped out to anyone who looked at this. Are out-of-district tuition, well, those numbers, does that factor in the Chapter 70 as well, or is that only circuit breaker?
Tom, you can jump in. Only circuit breaker, Chapter 70, there is, the allocation received from Chapter 70 is based on the number of high-needs students that you have, but the out-of-district tuitions would be, you know, mostly offset by circuit breaker, however that eventually comes in. Tom, feel free to clarify or...
Yeah, I believe in the formula, there is a rate that is set. It does not change. And those were some of the modifications through the Student Opportunity Act that were revised and being implemented over the course of these six years. So they increase the percentage of total enrollment for each district that is, they classify or would consider to be out-of-district and then reimburse or fund districts based on that number. But it's not driven by actual enrollment in programs as circuit breaker is.
Oh, okay. Go ahead, Tom. Yeah, so this looks great. I can tell it's a lot of work. And I know this year was tougher than other years because of the cost of everything has gone up. And it's also probably frustrating because you can't even find teachers able to fill the positions, which isn't your fault. But I had a question about the, you know, the Director of Student and Family Support. And, you know, I know that they've been trying this in different school districts across the country. Do you have any data or any information about how it works on communities like Long Meadow having an individual like this? Is there...
Yeah.
Yeah.
You know, no specific data comes to mind, Tom, but I think, you know, given the increasing number of students that we're seeing who are English learners, the increasing number of students who need tiered behavior supports or mental health supports, certainly there's plenty of data to say that the needs are growing. And we see this position as one that would help with educational stabilization for families that need assistance and support. We see it as a position that would help us really build out aligned and coordinated SBL and mental health supports across the district.
Okay, great. Yeah, because I, you know, I was a special ed a long time ago when it wasn't very profitable. But, you know, one of the things I learned in those years is that if parents can't learn to control their children, no one can control their children. The teachers can't very, do a very good job. The police can't do a very good job. So I applaud your efforts to go into the homes and help parents who are having difficulty because there's a lot of difficulty out there. The other thing is, you know, in terms of predictions, you know, if we look at bringing online a new middle school, will that affect enrollment? Has there been any kind of suggestions that that would increase enrollment? I don't know if you have any opinion on that. And then would that affect the budget?
Yeah, we're, yeah, we are in the middle of pinning down a design enrollment with the Mass School Building Authority. So we've had some preliminary conversations with them. You know, I think that there is sort of a new school effect that the MSBA builds into the design enrollment that they assign to districts. You know, I would anticipate that it would make Long Meadow an even more attractive area to homeowners. And so I think that's something they need to think about. I think if we were to move forward with a single site, I think there would be some budget impacts there, potentially the savings that you achieve through having a combined setting.
Yeah, well, that's good for taxpayers to be aware of, that, you know, even if this budget may be a little hard to swallow, which I, hopefully it won't be, you know, I think it's very reasonable, but that it looks like there's cost savings in the future. And so that's the good news to take from this. Thank you. Mark?
Thanks, Josh. Dr. O'Shea, thanks a lot. I have two questions. The first one, I think I know the answer to, but I think it would be beneficial for the people at home to hear it from you. And that is, on slide 14, and Mike, if you can go back to slide 14, can you explain where the $7.1 million of Chapter 70 money fits into that, you know, that revenue portion of it? The second question is more of a thought question, but several years ago, we had another situation for high out-of-state tuitions. At the time, there was a lot of discussion about bringing in-house the training that we needed so that we could do those, you know, fulfill those requirements in the town of Long Meadow rather than pay for people to go elsewhere because we didn't have the expertise. At what point do we think about that again and has that gone on as well? But you want to start with Chapter 70, where it fits in, that'd be great.
Yeah, sure. So Chapter 78 is revenue that is received directly by the town of Long Meadow, so that the $7 million in Chapter 78 would be reflected in the general fund contribution to Long Meadow Public Schools. As far as, you know, trying to establish programs in district to serve students with intensive needs, that's something that we're regularly committed to. It's certainly good for kids to create programs in their neighborhood schools, assuming that we have the capacity and the training. And that's something that we're always working towards. And I'd say the question you asked in that area was one that the school committee had charged us with as well, to, you know, make sure that we're exploring those opportunities to create capacity in districts so as to reduce out-of-district costs.
Thanks.
Any questions from finance?
No. Yes? No.
Can the board? All right. Thank you again for your hard work. We appreciate your presentation and everything that went into it. Thank you.
Well, thanks for your time tonight. Ordinarily, I'd stay on the call, but I do have to jump in. Thanks for your time and good questions.
All right. Good night. Good night. Thank you.
Good night.
Okay, let's keep the good time going. Go to the Town Manager 2024 Budget Presentation.
Okay, thank you. So there is an updated budget message that was shared about 6:15 tonight. It has been linked on the agenda and it is available on the website, but I did want to draw your attention to the fact that it was updated from what you received, the select board received Friday, and what finance received this afternoon. So there is a new one. And I will be having Mike bring up the PowerPoint presentation. Does that link to the agenda as well? Yep.
Let me just share it on Zoom.
Okay, so this is the FY 2024 Town Manager Budget Presentation, starting off with budget highlights on the next slide. Yep. Okay. All right, thanks. So this year's budget, again, balances the budget without use of reserves. This budget does currently use the full allowable levy limit of 2.5%. However, we are confident that with new growth, state aid, and estimated receipts, the numbers are going to continue in a positive direction, and that will allow us to meet the finance committee's recommendation of 2.44%, which is approximately $30,000. The FY 24 budget does fund the FY 24 capital plan and continues to provide funds to the various DPW line items that will further effectuate the results of the Collins Center report, and you'll see that as we go further down into the presentation. Okay, so the bulk of how the budget is funded is through our property taxes. That's no surprise. It's really the same year over year, but this increase this year shows a 3.3% change. Our state aid, we saw some really positive numbers here that has drastically helped get this FY 24 budget funded, and that's a 6.85% change over FY 23. Our local receipts are also promising at 14.2% increase over 23. And then we've got the enterprise funds, water, sewer, and stormwater. As you see, the stormwater percentage is 24.59. That's attributed to a couple of things. One is the stormwater budget itself going up to try to meet the requirements that we are trying to meet for MS4 and just overall projects that the DPW is trying to accomplish in the stormwater area, and the fee going up. This is part of the select board policy, that it's going to try to fully fund itself by, I think, it's 2036. So you'll see that fee continue to climb over the next dozen or so fiscal years. So this is just the overall, like, snapshot of '23 to '24 and the percent change. And we get into a lot more specifics in the budget message. But here you'll see, we've got the decrease in general government that's largely attributed to the decrease of the legal expenses we had supplemented at the Fall Town Meeting to fund the gas-related work and the DPW lawsuit. We are not carrying that amount forward in the budget. That was, I think, $340,000, $300,000, something in that ballpark, and we're not showing that in the FY 24 budget. So that's that decrease there. Public safety's increase is mostly attributed to the settling of collective bargaining agreements. The first year of that three-year contract was the largest lift for the police patrol. So we won't, we should not be seeing those big increases in the out-years of that contract. Planning and community development, well, it looks like a massive increase. That is a very small budget, so any increase is going to show a large percentage. So it is a $44,000 increase. That's mostly related to two things. One is the funding of a 10-hour-a-week conservation agent, and the second is a reclassification of the clerical unit position in that office. We had some staff changeover in the last fiscal year. It caused us to look at the position more closely and realize that it was not reflective of the duties of the job, so we did make an adjustment there. Schools, as you saw in the presentation, that's a $1.5 million increase. I'm pleased to say that we are able to fully fund the school request, and that is a 4.01% increase. Moving on, we've got DPW. This is all funds, including the enterprise funds. So it's a 5.87% increase or $680,000 over FY 23. And I'll go into that in more detail as we get down the slide presentation. Community Services is showing a decrease. This was attributed to a few things, including shifting of some of the positions to some grant opportunities. And the parts, I'm sorry, the Assistant Director at Parks and Recreation is being cost-shared between the general fund and the revolving fund to better reflect the duties of that position. That position does support daycare, and we were able to shift some of that to the revolving fund. So you see a decrease there. Debt service has increased. This is due to the middle school feasibility study and the air handlers at the high school. Employee benefits and insurance, that's a 3.9% increase. Isn't as bad as what we've seen in some other years, but it is still an increase. And capital, we're still able to meet that capital policy set by the select board, an increase of $120,000. So these are the notable items here. I did talk about the part-time conservation agent, and then we're, we've made significant efforts to adequately fund the needs of the DPW. This includes substantial increases in building maintenance. We've added a street sweeping line, painting, and line striping. These are, street sweeping, painting, and line striping are operational issues that should be happening annually, and they had not been adequately funded in prior year budgets. The addition of a .75 full-time equivalent tree warden position. I'll just add that that .75 is 30 hours a week. That is going to be coupled with that 10-hour-a-week conservation agent position to give us one full-time position of a tree warden/conservation agent. We do have a job description drafted. It is a model that several other communities are looking at, and we do have an application pending to fund the tree warden position through a grant opportunity for this first fiscal year. We're hopeful we're awarded that. We should know sometime later this spring.
So that's one person holding both positions?
Correct.
Okay.
This is also funding the full year of the HR Benefit Assistant and the Code Enforcement Officers that had been previously approved at the Fall Town Meeting for half-year funding. First-year debt service payments on the middle school feasibility study and the air handlers here at the high school. This also fully funds OPEB as per the select board policy without the use of reserves. This is the first year in several fiscal years that we've been able to do this. It also covers 50% of the Westcom assessment. We had previously been, in the last three years, 100% covered by the Westcom. The Westcom assessment had been 100% covered by the development or support and incentive grant through State 911. It's a five-year phase down, so the first three years were covered 100%. Year four is 50%. Year four is 50%, year five is 25%, and then we're on our own in year six. This also, this fully funds a school budget request and gives additional support to increased hours at the Adult Center and support for a food pantry manager, which is, which would be a very part-time position in the Adult Center budget. Some outs-
I have a question.
Sure.
I have a question just on salary budgeting. Are salaries budgeted at 100% or is there, are they factored down for turnover and open positions? And I'm just curious what the turnover rate or open positions are currently.
Sure. They're funded at 100%.
Okay.
Because we don't generally anticipate that there'll be openings, although we do know that that's possible. It's just too hard to predict where those would be to fund it any other way. We don't have a turnover rate. It's not something that we capture. We do have several positions, the Assessor, which is the one that comes to mind most, that's been vacant for some time. Actually, a year and a half now that we've been trying to fill that position. Most positions are fairly full right now. Actually, we're doing pretty well on the town side. But there is the, the turnover that everyone's experiencing, but not on wood. It's been better than, it's, it's been the best that it's been coming out of the pandemic.
Okay, thank you.
On the, it wasn't on the last slide, but originally you said we aren't funding anymore for the, the gas line?
Litigation.
Litigation? So is that because we think we have enough funded already, or did the litigation end when I-
The litigation did not end. The warrant article that was approved at the Fall Town Meeting was for funding to bring us all the way through the EFSB process. And so historically, the legal line item has not funded those special specialty legal projects. The DPW is an example that's been going on for several years. It's not baked into the legal operating budget.
So do you expect that a warrant item will show up in 2024 to fund the remainder of that? Or we fully, you think what we budgeted in '23 is enough?
For the gas?
Yeah.
It should be enough. That was the goal.
That's what we were told.
Yep.
Okay. But it's possible that a warrant item would come up in '24 if it got, went over that.
I'll go personally yell at it.
I won't change it, but yeah, it could happen. All right, just checking.
Anything could happen, but we were told it would.
All right.
Lynn, I just had a question on the street sweeping. When I was doing my homework over the weekend, I, to keep me honest, but I thought it said 70,000? Is that right for that? The street sweeping? Which was a significant increase. It was just one item that really stood out to me. Think I marked it.
The Stormwater.
Thought it was at the top somewhere.
755.
It's 40,000. Line 755.
Oh, yes, okay.
50,000 requests 40,000.
Yep. Which is an increase, historically, it's been funded at, well. FY 23, it was funded at 12,005. The year before, '22, it was not funded. And '21 was 4,500. So it's a, it's a large increase to represent the entire town needing to be street swept.
Isn't that one of our requirements under the permit?
It is.
Yeah, that was for-
So the next slide here, some of our budget challenges. I'm gonna, I'll talk about these, but I will, I do want to point out the challenges in FY 24 have, are not as obvious as they have been in prior fiscal years. So this is, we are in a better budget position for FY 24 than we have been in in quite some time. But these challenges could potentially have impacts late for further fiscal years. So the first one here is the Waging Classification Study. This study's ongoing. We don't have the results of it yet. It should be finishing up sometime in June at the latest. And then once we know that, we'll be able to figure out what the impacts could be for the remainder of the '24 budget and the out-years. We continue to be faced with inflationary challenges. We've seen it in the Capital Plan. We've seen it in the Department Operating Budgets. We are seeing it in trying to hire people with the salaries that we have. So we're seeing it in every facet, and you've also heard it from the School Department that they're seeing it as well. So that continues to be a challenge, and I think we'll be dealing with that for at least the next fiscal year. What's also been glaringly obvious to me over the last year and a half, really, has been the portfolio of properties that the town and school side needs to maintain. Those are primarily maintained by the DPW. So there's six schools and 12 town buildings. I counted any building that had a roof. So that includes the Edgely Building, the Emerson Road Pump Station, the Forest Glen Water Pump Station, and then all of these buildings, you know, that we all operate out of. It is a significantly large amount of facilities to have to manage. And then addition to that would be the aging infrastructure, our streets, our water, sewer, stormwater. That, the need to make repairs and replacements to that infrastructure is not going away, but the cost is increasing, and the revenues are not keeping pace with the amount of money it costs to make those repairs. And this is just a snapshot of where we are with our General Fund Reserves. We have a fairly healthy amount in our operating stabilization. And that number continues to grow, as you've seen. So that is a conversation for potentially another day, but one that we should probably have in the near future. And then this gives you a snapshot as to where we are as of the end of January.
Do we have a target for the Operations Stabilization Fund, or we just put money that we have left over in it?
We do. It's, um-
There, there's a target for what's done as General Reserves, which is the combination of free cash and the Operational Stabilization Fund. That target is 5% to 10% of the operating revenues, and we are a little bit above the 10% level. It, it's questionable whether the 10% is, should be addressed to a more, a little bit higher. I'd have to do some research with our rating agency to see what their recommendation is, so on and so forth. But, you know, currently we use standard and pores. So that's where we are. We're a little bit above policy as it stands right now.
That's, Paul, I have a question. Just, when we look at that, that's a great number of the Operational Stabilization Fund.
You saw the history up there on how it grew, so.
So, you know, if we look at having to fund, you know, a middle school a couple of years down the road, is this going to help us get lower interest rates?
It, it will certainly be looked upon positively by the rating agencies. There's no doubt that one of the things that we've been written up, I don't say written up, but negative features of the town's balance sheet and so on and so forth were the reserves that we had, and those have steadily improved over the last years. We haven't had a full-blown rating. I think June of 2021 was the last one. We still sell at, right below a AAA community. So is it going to get us to a AAA? Probably unlikely, but we still are going to sell very strong.
And would the Finance Committee agree, like, that these numbers are moving in the direction we need them to go in?
Yes.
Right, yeah?
Paul, I would, yes, except if we have long-term maintenance that we're not funding and instead we're reserving cash, you've got a trade-off there. Right? Because keeping things up, there's a value to that, too. So I understand the desire to have low, have low interest rates when we borrow, but this is also funds we could be using to make progress in some of the other issues that we're having. So I, I, we should always think about that when you're holding on to cash. There's a real cost of holding on to it. As well as a benefit.
Brings me to one of my questions, actually. If, moving offices to Greenwood, is that going to help with maintenance, or is that going to make it harder?
So it, the goal is that it helps because we're reducing our footprint of the facilities that DPW has to clean and maintain on a daily basis. But then we also, as soon as we complete that move, or right before that, I guess, we need to be having a conversation about what's the next life for these buildings that we're vacating? What's the next best use, whether it's the town or someone else?
Reduce self-to-maintain them while it's ours.
Yep. Okay, next slide. So just some more information. We've got a bunch of budget meetings coming up next week. The department heads our meeting with the Select Board. Then the Select Board will vote on the budget March 20th. I have learned that the Finance Committee is having their public hearing March 22nd. And a copy of this PowerPoint and all of the documents that were shared with you are available on the longmeadow.org. Oh, that is the wrong email address, or website. LongmeadowMA.gov.
It'll still work, though.
Yeah, we will, we'll update that, yeah. But everything's available on the website. Happy to take any questions that you have, or you can email me, or bring them up at the next couple of meetings.
I got a few small questions, and nice work on this one. I know you said, you made it look easy at least, but I can see there's a lot that went into it. One of my questions was-
I believe Mark Gold has a question, too.
Yes, I see his hand. You mentioned the food pantry?
Yes.
And you recommend to not fund the food pantry manager?
Sure, so what we did, the request came from the department as a new line item for a food pantry manager. What we've done is fold that into administration right up above it.
Oh, okay. Mark, why don't you go ahead while I'm getting my thoughts together?
Thanks, Josh. Lynn, it's a great budget. Thank you for doing this. And one of the things that we spoke about in the past, and I just wanted to ask you about the new full-time DPW employee that's, you know, three-quarters, you know, in, in the tree warden and one-quarter conservation agent. Are we fully covering their future OPEB contributions? Or by hiring them, this person, are we really falling a little bit further behind? And I say that because we, years ago, we used to have these discussions that said anytime we hire a, a new person or add a, add a FTE, we need to make sure we fully fund their long-term liabilities. And the question is, is there a way to calculate it, but more importantly, have we put that into the budget system?
I'll, I'll take a shot at that, Mark. You know, to, to fully fund, we would really have to get into a actuarial study that would put us on a, a funding schedule. And I believe the answer would be that we are not fully funding what the town's liability is on a year-to-year basis. So we're funding the OPEB amount right now on a policy of the Select Board that's roughly taking, you know, a little over 1% of the operating revenue, 1% of the tax levy, and that's going into the OPEB. We have not adjusted that to add X amount of dollars per new employee or subtracted it, or subtract anything, you know, if a new, if an employee is coming off. So we have not put in any OPEB money extra for any new full-time equivalents who will be benefited.
Is there, is there any wayfall of estimating, estimating, or approximating what that might be? I mean, because what seems to me is that even though we're putting money into OPEB, if we hire a new person, we're falling further behind, if you will, because we're not accounting for that new person.
I would probably have to reach out to an actuary. Are there any actuaries in the?
I am, but not a life actuary.
Yeah, no. I, I would have to reach out to an actuary to get a, you know, a good estimate of what would be funded on a per-person basis. I, I don't have a mechanism to calculate that.
Even a percentage of your salaries say, you know, we should be putting, because this doesn't run that way, huh?
I, you know, it may, Mark. I just, I, I just don't have the, the knowledge of, of what a good number would be. We'd have, we'd have to go to somebody with a bit of further expertise.
All right, thanks.
Yeah, Mark, I would just say, that's a very fiscally responsible step, and I, I agree with your, with your thinking about that.
I have a question on CapEx. I think it was like $2.2 million. And my question kind of goes to Erica's. When you came up with the Capital Plan, was there anything that was dismissed that you said, "We're not going to fund capital," that maybe we might have thought differently with?
So capital requests always exceed the budget.
Sure, I understand that.
The budget for it is set by a Select Board policy, 3% of revenue, revenue annually. This year was a very challenging year because cost estimates for things are so high compared to what we've been seeing in the last, you know, decade or so. So that $2 million did not go very far this year. So yes, certainly, there are items that-
Are there ruse about to cave in or anything like that? Is there anything dire that because of this arbitrary $2 million that we're not going to fix that could cost significantly more if it gets delayed?
I would need to talk with facilities to get a better handle on what would be considered dire. I know that we've been having a lot of conversations about center school and the need for windows and a roof there. The amount of work that's needed there would likely exceed what we have in the Operational Stabilization Fund or get very close to it, and it wouldn't be, it wouldn't make sense to use that fund just for that one facility.
Okay.
I was looking at the elections. How much extra, do we know how much extra this, tomorrow's election is costing us? I see the line is 15, 20?
Yep, so when we build out the, the future fiscal year budget for elections, we project it based on what we know. So we know that there will be a local election next year, and I believe there is a presidential primary. So we, we estimate those out. In terms of tomorrow's election, I don't have a total on what that will cost yet.
When we're budgeting out, do we assume that there's going to be preliminary and a special and yada, yada, or is that?
We only budget for what we know.
Oh, yeah, what we know, all right.
Yeah.
Okay. And then I have a few other questions on cuts that you had in your recommendations. One is 384, and it's the grounds maintenance utilities.
Yes.
And you have a note on there that the Greenwood pool leak had almost 18 grand last year, which is unreal.
Yep.
Do we know, well, one, my question is, do you do you know why, and if there's any questions for Parks and Rec or DPW, let me know. But the request is for 100 grand, which is a lot, and then you cut off 50.
Yep.
Which should, if the pool leak is fixed, that should get us under.
Correct.
Why was the, do you know why the request was 100 grand?
They did their best guess on estimating what utilities might look like, and with the plan to replace the liner, it's scheduled for this spring, but if something comes up and it doesn't happen, this was their best guess, knowing, looking at the FY 23 budget as it stands now and where we are in this current fiscal year. It was the best guess that they had at the time.
So I guess this is a general, because a lot of my other questions were on the really high utility requests.
Yes.
Are, are we seeing as a town the same, the increases as, as bad as we're seeing at, at home as residential customers? And are we going to get, if worst-case scenario comes forth on utilities, are we going to get killed on these bills that we didn't budget for?
So a lot of our fuel has been locked in, so those, those rates are fairly steady. In terms of electricity, that, yeah.
Supply is locked in, the distribution, we're, we're at the mercy of-
That's usually higher than the supply, anyway.
At least we're locked in on some of it there.
Okay.
A portion of it.
Like, I know for a street- Like, I know for streetlights, I think you cut 200 grand off the request.
Yeah, so that was a little bit of confusion from the DPW's part. The utility bills are really a full-time job for one person to try to decipher. I think Mark Gold can maybe attest to that, because he's looked at those quite a bit for LED streetlights. There was just a misunderstanding with the credits that are showing on the LED streetlight bill, with those actually not being amounts owed. Those are actual credits. So there was a confusion there. So that was a nice, easy cut. It made this budget a lot nicer to put together.
Right.
Yep.
Okay, that makes a lot more sense than...
Yep.
I thought that that was maybe a huge estimate.
Yeah, and for both, both the staff at the DPW that worked really hard putting this together, this is their first budget here in town.
Okay.
So they, it was a, not their first budget ever, but first in this town.
Joshua, you're looking for something. Can I just ask, follow up on one of your last questions?
Yeah, of course.
So Lynn, this is just a follow-up on the Greenwood pool, and maybe it gets to a later discussion in the meeting, but we have money in the budget for the borrowing of money for the pool cover and liner, and yet we have a potential warrant article for paying for that out of available cash. And I know you can't budget for what we haven't approved yet, and maybe that's the right answer here, but if the town meeting should approve spending that money out of available funds, would that then give some relief to this budget in the line item for interest?
It does, in a debt service payment that we have scheduled.
Correct, in the debt service payment, right.
Yep, it would reduce that. So yes, it would offer us some relief.
Good, thanks.
Have we looked at any solar on public land to help offset? I mean, like, the parking lot in the senior center would be a perfect place to put solar.
Yeah, so the Select Board, this fall, I believe, or summer, maybe, we started a working group to look at solar on town facilities. That group made a lot of progress, and as we were getting close to preparing the RFP, we discovered that we had a significant amount of credits on our utility bills from our current net metering agreements. They had not been reallocated when we made the switch to LED streetlights, so we had amassed a large credit, which is a good thing, but also a challenging thing. So we are now working with someone to reformulate our net metering agreements and adjust those. We have to adjust our Schedule Z, which is the allocation of those net metering agreement credits to our utility bill accounts. Once all of that gets done, then we'll pick back up with the solar work and get going again.
I just like the comment about the street sweeping. I'm glad to see, I know that the DPW director was, he felt bad. He didn't have anyone to run those machines, you know, there. And I know, as a person who bikes through town, I could tell certain streets had not been swept all summer. And so it'll be nice to know that that's going to start to happen, because it would be good to promote people biking around town, and that's one way to do it, so. Good priority. There's a lot of good priorities in this budget, actually. You know, as I looked, I think, you know, we talk a lot about equity, and I think this budget really tries to address that fairly well. And what jumps out to me, and I don't know, other people are probably much better looking at budgets than me, but it looks like, you know, parts of the workforce, like the clerical folks and so forth, are getting a better deal. I don't get that sense. So that's the kind of equity that's always important to plan, and, you know, we could talk about it, but, you know, paying everyone fairly across the board. And of course, the study we're doing will tell us if we're on the right track, so. And if we are, then we won't be, we won't get sticker shock. So, you know, I think you're doing some pre-planning already on that.
So you expect the results of the Wage and Classification Study to be available in the summer, I think you said?
Yeah, I'm hoping for June.
Are you getting any preliminary findings to show where we stand?
The only one that I received, I wouldn't even call it a finding, more than, it was mainly a comment related to lifeguard salaries. We are low.
Yes.
It's why we, one of the reasons we can't attract. The problem is, to make that adjustment, it has an impact on the operation, on what we can fund. So we did some, make some adjustments last fiscal year. Unfortunately, it wasn't enough, and we're likely looking at needing to be much higher than where we are.
Are we significantly paying under what the private pools are paying in town?
Yes, and the state pools.
Go ahead.
Just one general item that I'm just seeing, in terms of all the supplies that we have for different departments, have we thought about doing like a bulk purchasing effort to help drive down some of the costs that we're, that we have here?
Yeah, we haven't formally thought about it, or formally come up with a plan, but it is something that's on my radar, especially when we move to Greenwood and have a consolidated office. My goal would be, at that point, to have a consolidated purchasing program. We, at that point, will also be consolidating to a central copy center, so that every office isn't maintaining a copy machine. It will be a different model than what staff are used to, and I think that would be the right time to do it. But yeah, there can be a lot of benefits to a consolidated purchasing.
Sure. Thank you.
This is kind of a small potatoes question, but I saw the line item for postage. Is that tax bills under assessor or treasurer collector?
Yeah, so it's...
It's all bills.
Yep.
You know, it's also the checks we send to vendors, the bills that we send out. Everything goes through, essentially goes through that office.
Is there, so for tax bills, do they have to be mailed? Or can, is there a way to, people could opt in and get an email from EUNIS? Or is there a statute on that?
I think...
You know, it's something we did try years ago and have not had success about people signing up for that, but my gut would tell me that it's mandatory that we send them.
Yeah, I don't know. I receive an email bill in my community.
Okay. That's something I thought, like, a lot of people pay, I pay through escrow, so it's like a write a check when I get the bill. So if I just got an email, it'd be fine by me, but I don't know if I would add an extra step, but cut out some postage here and there.
You know, maybe something we should look at, because it was about six or seven years ago, we tried to have people sign up, and maybe it was the marketing that the town did, but we didn't have much success. So it might be something that we could look at moving forward.
The system is very confusing, and whether or not you're going to get an email and for what is not obvious. So I would suggest that the system we're using is not user-friendly as well.
Well, you do get an alert from that EUNIS, or whatever it is, that tells you that there's a bill that's come due.
Yeah.
It's a water bill, too.
Yeah, it's Unipay. And they've made a lot of advances in the last two years or so in e-billing and automatic payments. So that's definitely something we can look at. We haven't in a while, so we can definitely do that.
So I know, I'll get the notice before I actually get the mailed one.
Yeah, I did for some, but then other ones you sign up and it doesn't happen, and I don't know. That was a long time I was trying to do it, but it's not a great system.
There's new things being, they're working on it now.
I know, they're making it better, but...
Mike's doing a lot of work on it. And my final question is on the assessor's line item. So is KRT, are they always a supplement, the assessor's work? Are they doing, are they doing assessor's work now?
Well, we don't have a principal assessor, so they are doing the assessor's work.
So if we had a principal assessor, would that, would this change?
If we had a qualified principal assessor, yes, we could reduce those services. You know, the last transition that we went through, and the reason we hired KRT was about five years ago, is we had an individual who took the position but wasn't fully qualified as of yet. It took them a number of years to get trained, so on and so forth. So it depends on the, on the actual person coming in to that, how much we can reduce those services and how quickly. You know, if we need a person who needs to be trained, it's going to take a few years that they would gradually come down with the price of KRT.
Hence why we're trying to hire a fully qualified person.
One who's certified, one who knows all the things about the DOR and all those kind of things, so.
Any other questions? Great. All right, nice work, Lynn. Thank you very much.
Very nice.
Thank you to Paul for the massive amount of help he provided this budget again.
Can you just repeat what the Finance Committee's forum is, Public Forum?
March 22nd.
Thank you to the Finance Committee for coming tonight.
Thank you.
Appreciate you being here. All right, Mike, we've lost our audience. Do we have anyone online who wants to speak?
Yeah, just a reminder, if you're in the chat and would like to make a resident comment, you can press the raise hand icon, and we will let you into the meeting. I do not see anyone.
Okay. Moving on to the Select Board comments. I can't write, I can't remember where I wrote them. Anybody else? No? Okay. Move on to Town Manager's Report. Oh, I'm sorry, I remember what it was. We are, I don't know if Lynn's going to touch on this, but we are desperately looking for lifeguards in town, and I just encourage people to get trained if they're not trained, and so we can open Greenwood Pool as much as possible. Thank you. Go ahead, Lynn.
Thank you. That was the perfect segue, because my first item is Greenwood Pool. So at the May 22nd Annual Town Meeting, I'm sorry, May 2022 Annual Town Meeting, funding was approved for a pool liner and a cover for Greenwood Pool. Both these items were put out to bid, and they're on schedule for installation the end of April, beginning of May for the liner. The cover's going to be installed when we close at the end of the 2023 season. Greenwood Pool is expected to open on time for weekend use at the end of May or early June, and then seven days a week, beginning at the end of June. The design and construction work for Bliss and Reynolds Pool will not be done in time for the pool to open this 2023 summer season. We've been advertising for lifeguard openings for Greenwood Pool and have received five applications for the needed 12 positions. We've also promoted the lifeguard certification course that's going to be held soon in East Long Meadow. The Hazard Mitigation Plan, in October of '22, I had announced that the town had been awarded a Hazard Mitigation Grant Program, Grant Award. This is to update our local multi-hazard mitigation plan. BETA Engineering was selected as the town's consultant to facilitate our process and consult on the plan update. BETA is going to work with the town's Hazard Mitigation Planning Committee. That committee includes the Emergency Management Director, Town Manager, Director of Planning and Community Development, Director of the DPW, the Town Engineer, and the Assistant Town Engineer, the Public Health Director, Police Chief, and Adult Services Director, and the School Superintendent. BETA is working on developing a project schedule which will include robust community engagement. So as soon as I have more information on that schedule, I'll share that back here, because we will need that community support. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Lynn. I guess that's why I decided not to say anything about the lifeguards, because you had covered. That's why I must have not written it down again. Any questions for Lynn? All right, moving on to old business, the approval of the February 21st, 2023 draft meeting minutes.
I moved, we approved the minutes for whatever it is.
February 21st.
February 21st.
Second.
All right, any further? Mike?
Mr. Levine?
Yes.
Mr. LaKisa?
Yes.
Mr. Zorka? Yes. Mr. Gold?
Yes.
All right, Fiscal Year 2024 Capital Plan vote is next on the agenda. All right.
Josh, Mr. Levine.
Oh, go ahead, Mark.
Yeah, Josh, I have a couple of comments on the capital plan that we're going to talk about. One is that I know Lynn had requested additional funding for, I guess it's engineering studies, and I think that's appropriate. The other thing that didn't get included, which concerns me, is guardrails. Traditionally, we've been doing streets, roads and streets, supplementing the Chapter 90 money, and we've also been doing sidewalks, but we also need some money for guardrails. And I think that in some instances, it's a shame to redo a street and get everything up to snuff and leave guardrails in tough shape. Frankly, I don't know, you know, what they look like and how much money it may need. So I guess my take would be to reserve the right to potentially tweak this at some point, but reach out to the DPW and find out where that stands with the need for guardrails. I mean, most of our older streets, especially the ones on the south end of town and also on the west end of town, have wooden guardrails rather than the new stainless steel ones, and they get beat up pretty badly. So I'd just like to make those comments. I don't have a dollar figure put in there. I think it would be a mistake to just throw an arbitrary number in there, but I think we ought to keep that in mind. So what I'd like to do is, you know, if we do vote on this tonight, is vote on it, subject to tweaking it maybe when we approve the overall budget, if we can find some other money.
I think that's a good thought. Those wooden guardrails, trees seem to fall on them all the time and break them. I think that's a really good idea. And I was looking back, I was trying to find Lynn's, your previous budget. So the $25,000 that was cut out, we would put that into town-wide project development? Would that be correct for the engineering? Or would it be better served under DPW?
I believe that capital planning wanted to consolidate the engineering funding with the project development. I see no reason not to do that. So either is fine. If you wanted to keep engineering as its standalone item, you could put it there. Or if you supported capital planning's thought to consolidate it with project development, that's fine as well.
I think it's fine to put it under one umbrella, as long as it's getting where we need it to go. I think that's fine. Yeah, any other, anything else we, suggestions from the board on what you want to change?
If I, the only, the only thing I would add to address Mark's comments, you don't have to vote on this tonight. If you wanted, I could bring those guardrail comments back to the DPW and have them be prepared to talk about it March 13th, and then you could vote on it March 20th. They have not submitted for guardrails. They did not this year. I don't recall it last year. And the year before, if I'm remembering correctly, which I might not be, they were in one of the last years of meaning to do some guardrail replacement. They had caught up. But I could be misremembering that. So if you'd like, I can bring that back. You can ask again on the 13th, but they'll be prepared for it, and then you could vote on the 20th.
I'm curious with, if we move the $25,000 again, how much are, how much is left over in our fund, anyway? But if we get an idea of what a guardrail costs to install, I can't imagine it's cheap, but that'd be good information to have.
Sure.
All right, with you, Mark, and everyone else?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's fine. I mean, the other thing we could do, if we can't do that, is just say, you know, the supplemental $425,000 is for supplemental roads and guardrails, and leave that to the DPW. I mean, generally, hadn't done that, but, you know, just to say, you're allowed to use some of that money for guardrails if it's needed. But, you know, getting more information is better than not having the information. So if we can defer it, that'd be great.
Seeing no motion, move on to the next item under old business, was EverSource Western Mass Natural Gas Pipeline... Mass Natural Gas Pipeline Project Update. I think we can table this. I put it on because I was told about a meeting with the new climate czar under Governor Healy, and I was going to go to that meeting and I wanted to talk about it before I did. But I, it was put together by the Springfield Climate Justice Coalition, and at this point they did not want any town officials to go. So I will not be attending this week. So we'll table this for now, but I am glad to hear that this is being on the climate czar's desk. That's great. Moving on to New Business, one-day liquor license applications. We have a one-day application for Oksana Salon and Spa for an event, a fundraiser on the, April 2nd.
I also have a representative from Oksana Salon. If you have any questions in the chat.
Josh, we've done this, we did this, I don't know if it's last year. We've done this in the past, it seemed pretty routine.
Yeah, I think that's fine unless there's any questions and everything's in order, Mike?
Yep.
Okay, we got tips and certificate of insurance?
Yeah, liability insurance, everything, yeah.
All right, great. Any questions from anybody?
I guess I'll move that we approve the one-day liquor license for 4223 for Oksana Spa and Salon.
Second.
All right, anything further? Mike?
Mr. Levine?
Yes.
Mr. Gold?
Yes.
Mr. LaCusa?
Yes.
Mr. Zorka?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Best of luck. And then we have a code enforcement or zoning bylaw change petition for, regarding code enforcement officers. Lynn, do you want to explain this one?
Sure. So with the addition of the code enforcement officers, we have discovered that the town bylaw for enforcement is limited to the building commissioner for ticketing. So the request is to amend this bylaw to allow the code enforcement officers to actually write the ticket. Right now, they are bringing the violations back, completing the ticket, and then the building inspector is signing those tickets. So this would just streamline the process and make it more efficient. It does require a bylaw change, which is why it's coming to you. This will then be referred to the Planning Board for a public hearing before annual town meeting if you support this and it makes it to the warrant.
So if we support this, I mean, so we talked about, you and I talked about this, and we ran it by council, we have to send this to Planning Board?
Correct. Sorry, I should have been more clear. If you support this on the warrant, if it survives that process and it makes it to the annual town meeting warrant, then it will go forward. But it does need to be, it does have to go to the Planning Board.
And we have to vote to do that?
It is suggested, yeah. Yeah, it's recommended that you vote to do it, not just acknowledge it.
I have a question. So the enforcement agents, so is Mark, will they have like a badge or a special ID? Do you know how they have a badge?
Yes, they do. They have clothing with the town seal that says Building Department or Code Enforcement. I'm not exactly sure what it says. They have, they use a town vehicle when they go out. We were working on getting magnets for the cars. I don't believe those have come in yet. And then they do wear IDs.
Okay, great. Yeah, so I, I guess I'll forward a motion that we accept this amendment to the zoning bylaw, Section 315-8.
We're referring it to the Planning Board.
We're not going to vote and then send it?
We're voting to refer it.
Oh, we're voting to?
Yeah, just refer it to the, to the Planning Board.
To refer it to Planning Board. Okay, so my, my, my motion is to refer this to the Planning Board.
I second it.
Anything further? All right, Mike?
Mr. Levine?
Yes.
Mr. Gold?
Yes.
Mr. LaCusa?
Yes.
Mr. Zorka?
Yes.
Okay, and given that there is, we ran this question by Jesse to, regarding discretionary or non-discretionary referrals, and it's come up twice now, I have our look ahead if we want to have a referral policy just for the Select Board, so there's no question that we vote on this because it is an optional vote, but it's the, technically the right thing to do. But we'll be talking about that after budget season. Okay, and then we have a, next up under New Business Draft, 2023 Annual Town Meeting Warrant Review. All right, Lynn?
Okay, so this is the very first draft. It will likely change four times over before it comes back to you. It has already changed, I think, four times since it's even gotten to this point. We started with a low number of articles and it's quickly grown. So the first article is the William Goldwaite Fund. It's a pretty standard one that we have every year. Do you want me to just run through them or?
I guess we'll stop you if you have questions.
Okay, great, great. Article two is a prior, bill of prior year. This amount will maybe change, although it hopefully won't as we learn of other bills that needed to be paid. We need a vote of town meeting to pay those outside of the fiscal year.
Lynn, somebody will put in the explanation, just what it is, because?
Absolutely. Yeah, this is, go ahead.
We have, sorry. I was going to say we have that in a separate document. It just didn't make its way onto this one, so I'll make sure to add that one in.
Yeah, these are very much a work in progress right now. This is a rough, rough draft of what you'll get. Article three is to supplement the fire department overtime. We've had more staff turnover than we were hoping, and it causes a change in overtime. So unfortunately, we're needing more money to cover that.
So the ambulance fund, I think we saw before, it only has about 70 grand in it. So this would be a huge chunk of that.
This is coming from?
No, it will be a huge chunk, but there will be a, a pretty good amount that is going in there at the end of the fiscal year.
Okay.
I believe that, you know, the revenues might hit like 1.1 million, and we've only budgeted for, I think, 880. So they'll have about a 200, at least $200,000 going in here at the end of FY '23.
And where are we on the schedule for getting, needing a new ambulance?
You'll see that later on down here.
This is why this stuff's in my head.
Yes, yeah, there's a lot going on.
Should, should this read, you know, the second, the third line down for supplementing the fiscal year '23 budget for fire overtime?
It should be a capital B in budget and then a dash fire overtime, I believe.
It still won't read that great, though. Maybe the person has to read this at town meeting, so if we, I don't know, consider putting the budget for fire overtime, just, it'll read smoother, but it'll be Josh reading.
Yeah, don't worry. I'll add Lynn if I need to.
Article four is to fund IT recommendations. So we're in the middle of an IT study that will likely conclude after you, well, will definitely conclude after you set the warrant, but should be released before town meeting. And we are anticipating some changes that will be made or recommended as a result of that study. This would give us some money in order to make those changes before waiting until the fall town meeting. This will likely, this will, will absolutely be done in consultation with the school department because that's where the IT department resides at the moment. Okay, Article five, this is, like we were speaking about earlier, would change the funding source for the liner at Greenwood Pool to be paid out of current year reserves. So this will alleviate some of the debt service that has been budgeted in the FY '24 budget. Article six is associated with five. This rescinds the borrowing authorization that was done at the 2022 Annual Town Meeting for that liner. We'll plug in the language there, but we just, running out of time to get this to you. Article seven funds the Operational Stabilization Fund. And this is the FY '23 funding, not the FY '24 funding. Article eight is the budget. This will get filled in. Article nine is the capital plan funding, which will also be filled in. Article 10 is the diff. That also happens every year at the annual town meeting. We'll plug in all the language and the explanation. Okay. Article 11 and Article 12, I won't, I'll, I'll cover them together, but the goal is not to take them together. But essentially what we're doing is something a little unique. This directly speaks to some of the inflationary and purchasing challenges that we're encountering. The lead time on both an ambulance and a fire truck is incredibly long right now, and you can, they will not start building out either apparatus until you have a contract in place. We cannot sign a contract unless we have authorization for funding. Both of these are funded through the capital allocation that's done annually to grow that account so that when we go to buy it, we have enough money. By the time we have enough money to do this, we will be past the point of needing it, and we don't want to be in that situation. So the uniqueness of this is that we are authorizing the borrowing. We do not intend to actually borrow, but the borrowing authorization allows us to enter into a contract to get these started. And then we will continue to grow the budget through the capital process like we do annually. And then by the time the equipment is ready, we'll have enough money in that capital account. We will rescind the borrowing authorization, and it all should work out perfectly.
Does this lock, does this lock in the price by doing it this way?
Yes, yes.
So I got a quick one question. I guess Paul might be the best person to ask, but so if we sort of have these commitments to these loans, even though we haven't taken them out, does that work against us in some ways when we're, you know, being evaluated for?
You know, if we still had them on our books in 2027 or '28, when we were looking to do the, looking to do the, the middle school?
Okay.
They would look at what we have authorized in our capacity to borrow, and because these would be already authorized, there would be some negativity, you know, that we're, you know, we're overextending ourselves because this is on our books and that we put in middle school. These are fairly small amounts. It wouldn't have a great impact, but that's the only thing that I could foresee. And hopefully, again, by, by the time that we're looking to borrow for a new middle school, these will already have been rescinded.
Sure, 26 months, but there you go, it should be done. Okay, thank you.
Josh, can I ask a question about these?
Yeah, go ahead, Mark.
Yeah, so Lynn, just, you know, I don't know if these become, I guess they are, because they're borrowing, we're going to have to get the Finance Committee to approve them. I'm just wondering if it might not be good practice or, or good form to get it to say supported by the, the Capital Planning Committee as well, since in theory, if we were going to do this in, you know, a year and a half from now, they'd approve that. So, and I can't imagine them saying no, but I think it would be nice to have to say at the bottom, both endorsed by the Finance Committee and endorsed by Capital Planning Committee, so on both of these. The other concern, I guess, we have is what happens if these become available, you know, in six months? What, what would we do? I mean, I assume we'd buy them, but I guess then we'd have to borrow to buy them, right? Exactly. We'd have to do that, or again, whatever funds we did have in the ambulance account or the, the fire truck funds, you know, we would be reducing it, reducing the bond authorization by, you know, the amount we had available. And then we'd have to pay it back. I mean, I think we've done that with the ambulance before, Mark, where the general fund fronted a little money to the ambulance account, and then over a period of two or three years, the ambulance fund actually paid back the general fund. So if we? I do recall that, Paul, you're right. So I, I'm for, I, I think it'd be better, just good practice to have the Capital Planning Committee and Finance Committee to say, both say, yeah, this is a great, great plan.
I think it's a good, a good plan. I hope it works, as we expect. It's a good plan.
Yeah.
Article 13 is a sewer jet truck. This is also a borrowing authorization. I'm working on getting a description here, which will include what the lead time is. I do believe that this is also a significant lead time, but I don't know what that is yet. So I'll have more information for your next meeting. And that was in the, this is included in the FY '24 Capital Plan. Article 14 through, I don't know the number, let's see here, through 21 are all community preservation. I can go through them if you want, or?
Josh, I don't need to go through these, but I'm just going to make a comment to the Select Board and to anybody who's listening that, and I don't even remember which one it is, but there's, there's one here for renovating Glenbrook Fields, and I'm, oh, I guess it's number 17. And Article 17, I'm likely to, to vote against that vote. You know, I know it's got to be there. We've established that by the, by the community preservation, but certainly speak against it on town meeting floor. And the reason is because until we know what we're doing with Glenbrook School, you know, I think it'd be a shame to pour more money into the fields. Not that I oppose the field renovations because I live nearby, they're a mess, but I've seen too many instances where we spent big money on a, you know, on a building or on other things and then turn around and made them obsolete. And if, you know, we spent, you know, in this case, money to renovate Glenbrook's fields, and then we decide we're rebuilding and use it as a staging area for construction, we might as well throw that money down the sewer. So I just wanted to make that comment. I can't vote against the, putting the article on the warrant, but I certainly can make my opinions clear.
Go ahead, Lynn.
All right. Do you want me to go through each CPA article or skip through them?
No, I think that's okay. We've already, I don't know, I guess we haven't covered about a meeting, but they're straightforward enough.
Okay. Article 22 is the, is a result of a citizen petition that was filed for, I can't remember, I think it was November of '21's special meeting, special fall town meeting, to create a signage, athletic field signage revolving fund. The article was not specific enough to actually create that revolving fund, so this article will do that. And then the following, Article 23, sets the funding limit. And the Park and Rec Director is working on the policy that's associated so that if and when this passes, we're ready to launch the athletic field signage program, hopefully for July 1st. Okay, Article 24 sets the funding, creates the, establishes the funding limit for the adult center revolving fund. This amount is reflective of the amount that the Select Board approved not too long ago. It was an increase. Article 25 establishes a special revenue fund for our PEG access and cable-related funds. This is a change from how it has been done. There was a Inspector General ruling some time ago that made the recommendation for communities to set it up this way. We just had not done so, and we will be doing so with this warrant article. So this is the funding from Comcast that was received by the town, will go into this fund and then be paid out from there.
Where's it being, going into now?
It's just set into a special revenue account.
We're just holding it especially aside.
Article 26 is the rezoning of the parcel on Shaker Road that was brought to you a couple months ago and has been in front of the Planning Board.
Have they voted on it yet?
They just had a public hearing on March 1st, but I'm not sure if it was for this or if it was for the stormwater.
Yeah.
I could have, yeah.
I'm just confused because the folks who brought this to us wasn't Samuel and Mary Boyd.
So there's?
That's their, that's about, but, so will they?
It'll be filled in some more. It'll be filled in some more. We'll put an explanation in.
Yeah, explanation, okay.
And there's a, those, those names are highlighted right now. We're still in the process of confirming if that information's accurate. It was just the last known.
Okay. Otherwise, we're going to get a lot of phone calls.
Well, legal descriptions, you don't, you don't typically update it to who's actually there. This is carried forward forever.
Right. But that's what I mean. We just want to make sure that that was accurate as well from what was last seen.
Article 27 is the wetlands control bylaw. These were related to the stormwater changes that you had seen. 29, let's see, this is being deleted. I don't know if there will be an article 29, looking at the question that's in the notes here.
Doesn't the description of what is being put in already say it's deleting 600?
Yeah.
So I think that should do it.
I, I think so, but I want to verify it with-
Because what happens if you put in a new one that deletes one, but then we voted, for some reason voted no on this?
And that votes down.
It should all happen at one, with one vote, I would think.
Yep. Mike, what you have up there, is that different than what was linked on the agenda?
This, I just pulled up the working document and Corinne must have added this today because it, these weren't on the ones that were updated to the agenda. So this must have been new additions as, as of this afternoon.
Okay.
Yep.
So article-
Sorry. On the agenda was just placeholders for them at that point, but they, it must have been worked on sometime between now and then.
Okay. Article 30, placeholder for article six, chapter 800, this is also the stormwater.
So this doesn't match up anymore, right?
Not with what you're seeing on the agenda.
No, this was late this afternoon, I believe.
We can go off the agenda one, just so it's not so confusing.
Yeah.
Because that looks very different than what we're looking at. Article 31 says placeholder for zoning bylaws. I think that will be the code one, code enforcement one that you talked about tonight and that was referred to the planning board. I think Mike's trying to get back there right now.
It looks like that was at the 33 in the agenda, Lynn. I'm not sure.
Oh, yep.
Oh, yes, you're right. So I'm not sure what placeholder 31 is for. Maybe we can-
Oh, it's the wetlands zoning bylaws, right?
I don't know. Wetlands was up under article 27. Maybe it'll be, maybe we'll be able to reduce that article. 32 is acceptance of a mass general law that would no longer require us to be open on Saturday if the clock or timing fail on a Saturday. This has been problematic for the town clerk with the change in voter registration deadlines moving from 20 days to 10 days. It always falls on a Saturday. And so the town clerk has been there with all the elections we've had lately, quite a few Saturdays. So this would then kick it to the next business day.
And will this, so we're accepting provisions, is this become, we don't have to as a bylaw or anything like this?
It will be a acceptance of mass general law. So it gets listed in the code, well, once we have the online code, it gets listed there. So it's very easy to find.
Okay. Thank you.
Lynn, can I suggest that between now and I guess two weeks from now, our next meeting, somebody take a look at these and see if we can't arrange these in a situation or a sequence where, you know, if we go to the, you know, affirmation or put them into consent agendas, that they make sense to be together. Because, you know, I'd like to see article 32 moved up front somewhere fairly, you know, high and I think it's, ought to be pretty low opposition to it and that kind of thing. But, you know, I was thinking about instead of just asking to move that, just have them all, somebody, and maybe it ought to be you and Rebecca or somebody, maybe Rebecca and somebody else take a look at, before we put these into another form, to get them consolidated toward consent agendas.
Sure. Yeah, we can do that. Historically, it's been the current fiscal year items go first, then the budget for the new fiscal year, and then all the other ensuing matters related to the budget for the new fiscal year, and then any general and then zoning bylaw changes. But we can put that, we can really put it in any order you want. So if you're not partial to that order, we can definitely-
Obviously, that order makes sense to a lot of people and I don't want to dictate it, but it seems that we've been going through consent agendas pretty well. Just see what other people on the select board are going to think about it.
Well, we changed, I think for the special last fall, we changed the order quite a bit at the meeting when we approved. So I think that that's, yeah, I agree with you. The more we can bundle them together, all the community preservations all together, the more we can do that with other things. Absolutely.
At the fall town meeting, we did not have any consent agendas.
Well, we could have.
Right. We just, we didn't for a couple of reasons, but we can definitely look at it for, for this one.
Maybe the last annual, anyway.
And then the last item is the, the code enforcement bylaw that you referred tonight. So we'll keep refining this and you will have a final warrant on March 20th.
Lynn, I just have a question. If we go back to article 17 on Glenbrook Fields, would this, is the thought to, I guess, fix the entire field itself or is it just the, the playing surface for the softball and little league fields? Like the mound and, and the dirt? Are we talking about all the grass throughout all of Glenbrook or?
It's not the whole thing.
Placing clay.
Yeah, it's like the clay and edging, I think. You have to look at the project that's voted on, but.
Yeah, Dan, this was a citizen's request to the community preservation, so there was nobody that I, Lynn, maybe you can correct me if I'm wrong, but there was nobody at the DPW or grounds department who has that background to answer your question, Lynn. Is that true, Lynn?
Yeah, this wasn't a town project. This was a citizen project, so I don't really want to speak to what the intent was there. I know that the DPW has weighed in on this and do not agree with what was proposed.
Any other changes on the, or comments on the warrant as is?
There's going to potentially be a new article too, right? For the, for the wages?
We're not sure yet.
Oh, sorry.
So given that what we have doesn't match up with the working model, is there a way for us to see the working model and give you suggestions on how to move it around?
Yeah.
Okay.
So the working model has been updated and I think I updated, updated this one to the agenda Friday afternoon or even earlier today, I can't remember where it was. But I didn't know if that was intended for the next meeting to have the warrant be sent out to everyone again, or that's just going to be budget items at the special meeting. We could definitely send out another copy, right? Of the warrant?
Yeah.
Yeah, if we could just get it just closer to what it's actually going to be so we can make suggestions on order or even on language.
Do it on the 13th to the-
Yeah. If you have, if you're willing to do that on the 13th, what we can do is, well, obviously all week, we're going to be working on refining it. We can send you the most up to date copy Thursday night. You can submit individual suggestions to us about formatting or wording or placement. And then Monday night, the 13th, if you want to have a brief discussion on it, you can. And then the 20th is when you need to vote on it.
Okay. And how are we determining who's coming on Monday? Just as an aside.
I have sent a save the date to all the department heads and recommended that the smaller departments attend virtually and that the larger ones be there in person. That was the extent of what I had at the time. But if you know that there are departments you definitely will or will not want to hear from, I can make sure. As of now, everyone's planning on attending.
I guess we'd have to decide now.
Yeah.
If there's any way we don't want them to come.
Josh, I've gone through the budget. I wrote down a bunch of questions for next Monday. Frankly, I, you know, we have not historically had many questions about the library. We have not historically, you know, had, had a lot of questions about a couple of the other departments, but this year, for example, we've got some things in the adult center that, that may come up, so we might want Jim there.
Maybe at the beginning next week, especially for the virtual people, we can run down the list and if anybody has questions for specific departments, we can tell them to stay, otherwise they can leave.
Maybe we should do that. We've got to do that Wednesday or Thursday or this week. Aren't we having this meeting next Monday, the 13th?
Right.
Josh, does it make sense for each of the three of us, plus you, to just send you a list of here's the department heads I'm going to have questions of, so I'd like them there? And if nobody has any questions for Barry Jarvis, there's no reason for her to be there.
Yeah, I was just thinking the best way to compile that, but that's, doing it through me is, that's a good idea. So, yeah. So we'll, by, by Thursday, let us know, or let me know, and I'll send it on to Mike and Lynn for, so we can figure who should be there. But the big departments should be there.
To just complicate it a little bit more, you'll have a new member by Monday.
Oh, yeah. Well, they, they should be reading the budget anyway, so. Good point.
Yeah.
They can get sworn on on Wednesday, I guess, and shoot me an email right away.
That'll be a part of their initiation.
Hit the ground running. All right. Anything else on, oh, I'm sorry, we have another agenda item. Discussion on allowance of public meeting remote participation. So I think we put this on the agenda before it was extended and it's through 2025 now?
I think it's pending a vote. It's in the House right now.
Okay. So I was thinking, and Mark, you wanted to put this on the agenda. I thought that was a good idea. Even if it is, does get extended, we can have our own policy that would go beyond and isn't at the whim of the legislature, correct? Lynn?
Yes. It is slightly different, actually really different. Remote participation, you've adopted, it requires the chair of the select board to be at the meeting and a quorum of members to be present. The person attending remotely does not count towards the quorum and you've only adopted it for the select board. So the, the thought was to have a discussion about this in the event that the legislature does not extend these emergency provisions. We, you may want to decide whether you want to extend remote participation out to the rest of the boards and committees with the strict, you know, guidelines that they have to follow what remote participation allows. It is definitely not the same as what we've been enjoying the last couple of years.
So even on our own, we could not have a policy that committees, other boards can be fully remote?
Correct.
So that's, that's at the whim of the governor and the legislature?
Correct.
Okay.
You can continue to offer hybrid meetings for the public to attend remotely, but the, not the entire board.
Okay. I've only been on boards in the COVID timeline, so it's always been like that to me.
So Josh, the state law says that, that, you know, if, if the emergency declaration is not extended, as Lynn indicated, the chair and majority must be present. But, you know, you, you could allow for, if adopted, for minority remote participation, but even without that, we can authorize, I believe, guest visitors, presenters, petitioners' remote participation. And since I now believe that the state is going to authorize this, we just don't know when. I mean, they, they, they're now saying they're going to include it as part of the fiscal 2024 budget, I guess, but hopefully they'll pass this beforehand. But if not, I'd suggest that we draft something that allows for guest visitors, public and petitioners to participate remotely and the minority of any board.
Yeah, I think it's been really valuable that, to, to offer that. As Lynn said a couple of times, it's great for town employees. It offers a lot of flexibility, makes us a more attractive community that people don't have to live close by and can, if they get called into meetings, they can do it from other places, as we saw with Dr. O'Shea today. So I think to the extent we, everyone's comfortable with that and we'll vote on it, but I, I think that's a great thing to do. Go ahead, Tom.
Well, I just think for public hearings, I'd still want people to come here, you know, liquor licenses, things like that, that, well, you know, if it's a construction project. But for liquor license, I think, I think we should see the people, we should, I mean, I just think it's a very important decision we make when we give someone a liquor license. And it's going to get more important because we're going to become saturated with people wanting liquor license in every town across the country. Because, you know, it's, we've just made a big change. You know, when I see local breweries advertising on local television, it just leads me to think there's going to be more and more money spent on liquor licenses. You know, there's going to be more people seeking them and I'd rather see them directly, you know? Because we're, you know, the community depends on us to regulate the granting of them and that people are operating according to community standards. So, I mean, that's, I don't know, you don't have to agree with me, but that's my feeling.
Hey Josh, since we have until March 31st, because the current, the current allowance doesn't expire till then, I'm willing to take on drafting something for the March 20th meeting. And, you know, that it'll include my comments, certainly I'll include Tom's comments. If anybody else has any, they can send them to me, something that I think will achieve what we want to, hopefully as an interim before, until the state does act, if you're willing to let that happen.
Yeah, please, let's, let's do that. If anyone has any comments to mark in the meantime, and then we can work on it on the fly on the 20th a bit. All right. Anything else on that? Great. Anything on correspondence? And otherwise, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Anything further? All right, Mike?
Mr. Levine?
Yes.
Mr. Gold?
Yes.
Mr. Luciza?
Yes.
Mr. Zerka?
Yes.
All right. Thanks, everyone. Good night.